Mr. Parrish? Mrs. Staub?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Medrall?
Here.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Gouch?
Here.
Ms. Marler? Okay, that's a call. We stand with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the law. Any agenda changes?
No, there's none.
Okay, I'd like to welcome all our public here tonight. Does anybody in the public have any comments they'd like to make? Okay, everybody's had a chance to go over the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions, corrections, or additions to the consent agenda?
I got some questions around some of the incentives.
Okay.
So we had somebody that went to, um... ...for educational improvement or enhancement. He turned in two, so it's the same day or same mileage.
There was one that they had canceled, one that canceled. So I don't know, we may have had two people that drove, they may have drove separate.
Two from the same person.
Let me look at it. I'll look, I'll talk to you. That's fine. I'll look, I'll look into it, but I don't, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, and then, um, they also had somebody that went to St. Louis to live on the road to a clinic and stayed in a three hundred dollar hotel.
So they, my understanding is they, it was a clinic for sport and that's part of what they do is they get together. Hope that they get together in the evening. I don't know, I don't know about the price of the hotel, but that's, the evening activities are part of it? Where they hang out with the different coaches and collaborate and talk. I don't know about the hotel. I don't know if that was, I'm gonna look into that too.
My life would have been thirty, thirty-four eighty if he would have came back and forth for three hundred. Pretty, pretty standard.
And I think part of that is, I think they pay part of that other activity, but I'm not for sure. Yeah, it's, it doesn't, those sheets don't get listed like that. It just talks about what the expense was.
And then I also saw that we need to manage our chemicals better, I guess, in our science department. We paid only forty-five hundred dollars because of our...
Those, those were, that's something we've been working on for two or three years to get that put together. And it's, um, I mean, that's cost to get rid of the chemicals. They've been around for a while.
I'm not saying horrible we need.
Well, the, I mean, some of these were probably fifteen and twenty years old, these chemicals. So they, they, I mean, they're, they're old. We, we've been doing a couple of times in our, um, insurance, they call inspections. And so it was, it was something we were trying to work through and it was just something we just kept putting off, putting off with, but I think that's done.
And then you and I have talked in the past about some of the past class, money that's still hanging out there, still. We have sixteen, seventeen, eighteen still out there. We moved to where, you say we pass on the next class or whatever.
And their activity count?
It looks like our supplies and duties and fees are quite low. Just seeing what I saw in there.
Okay.
That's it. Anybody else have any questions or? If not, a motion to approve consent agenda. Move by Mr. Reynolds, seconded by Mrs. Medrall. We'll start the, uh, the old call. Uh, Mrs. Staub tonight?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed. Oh, I forgot about it. Sorry.
Put your hand up there.
Yeah. Okay, down to, looks like committee reports.
Uh, there's none.
Student member, none tonight. Principal's report, we've got an extra ten minutes.
Okay, so this is actually in the folder. Um, I'd like to congratulate Kylie Stevenson. On April third, she'll be representing Creever Community High School during our Rural Youth Day in Springfield, Illinois. This is through the Monroe County Co-op. So, um, she didn't write articles, a new application, but she was selected and she will represent Creever. So congratulations to Kylie. We had our freshman parent open house, um, last Wednesday. Um, we had a really great turnout of students and parents. This is always a really good night. Um, you know, you're getting in the spring and people are starting to get tired, they're ready to move on, get to summer, and then you get all these incoming freshmen in and there's just a buzz of nervous energy, excitement. They're, um, meeting their faculty for the first time. They start with a meeting in the gym. I think all of you have probably been in there once or twice with your own kids. And they go through all the requirements, health requirements with the nurse, they meet the athletic director, Lori talks. I spent some time talking, Jeff, and we start getting them acclimated to what they are going to expect in the fall. And then they had a really great extracurricular fair in here, um, almost all sports, activities, clubs, set up tables where they can sign up and hear information. The AMA B.C. sold a ton of, um, midgetware, um, the band, music boosters were there, getting new recruits for, for parents. So it was a, just a really overall great night. It's a fun night. I really, I like seeing those kids come in. They all huddle together though, they're one place to the next and it's, it's really good. Um, a couple of things we did add that to that, um, we were really trying to work with the parents and, um, educate them on the vapors. Because again, that is a, just an issue in every school and every conference. We were talking about it today and just what can we do? And, uh, some of the cities are, are being able to help the schools and support them more, um, depending on the size, depending on the county. We, we have some options that we're finalizing and looking into with our police department. So in your folder also is something called Statute seven twenty, I L C S six seventy-five. And we've been talking to the police a lot about what to do with this. Um, so what we're looking at, um, because of the size of our community, um, this is the next, um, step that we could take to help support, you know, try and take care of this problem and get better at school. So in their first time that they get in trouble, it would probably most likely be a suspension of type sometime. And the second one, we can actually turn it over to the police because in the one, they're under the age of eighteen, so it's illegal for them to have them. Those are eighteen and still illegal because you're not allowed to have them on school grounds. Um, from there, if they have some kind of record, they could potentially, um, have a steeper penalty in, in petty court. Um, kids that have never had a record or any of their kind of charges, um, would be turned over most likely to what they call the teen court. And we actually have a few students that represent on the teen court where they can assign community service, um, further education, papers. But they would, it becomes a legal matter at that point and they would have to follow through those consequences. You know, another option that we have looked at is that, um, for tobacco use, the St. Clair County Health Department has given our police the right to issue fines or tickets for those things, um, in a restaurant. Again, because of the size of our community, we can't have our own municipality that can take care of this stuff. Everything has to go through St. Clair County. But they did give them the right to issue these tickets for fines. We can't do it yet for favors because it hasn't been, um, classified, um, as strong as the cigarettes. But if that happens, that might be another option down the line as well. Um, some of our other conference schools, um, again, they live in different counties. Wad was not even in our conference school, but it's like a hundred dollar ticket for a student if they get caught with a vapor. They send it right to their, you know, the town government to handle it. It's, um, again, it's, you know, if that's supposed to be something to help, you know, people that are currently using cigarettes to help them stop. Well, on our end of it, at the very beginning, when you have a fourteen-year-old kid that is in the office time and time again and say, I just can't stop, I have to have it, all the, that's a problem. I mean, the last thing you want to do is just make it worse and punish and punish, but we can deter some kids from even starting. I, it's a step. You know, right now, it's just not a really great answer and this is definitely an epidemic that all schools are facing. So we are finalizing this, working with this with the police. Um, they have been so great and supportive and, you know, we'll, we'll see how this turns out in the long run. But if this all works out, we would probably look to start this process in the fall. Okay, um, we also had, on the next topic, we had our community crisis meeting here on Thursday, March fourteenth. Um, we had about seventy-five parents show up. Uh, Jeff had it set up to stream online. So if anybody who could not make that presentation, they can go to our, uh, to our, um, school website and click on the link below the FCHS YouTube page and they can see that presentation there. Um, again, looking more specific direction for our school, the grade school, um, not just the actual, you know, should we have a crisis? And again, we never want this to happen, obviously, but we also feel like we need to have some guidance and preparation, especially for the aftermath of things. You know, you're gonna have all these parents that want to just come straight to the school to get their kids. Well, they're not gonna be able to do that because the roads are gonna be blocked off with police and fire and, um, so having an idea of where, you know, the parents are gonna be out to go out to Adams and all the kids are gonna get bused out there and more controlled area with defenses and support where we have, um, all kinds of things ready with information about the kids, how to get ahold of parents, you know, it's, again, you don't want to think about it, but at least having some kind of plan in place is, is better than nothing. And, you know, that's, it's a start. Um, we will continue to meet every year with this group. Um, there's so many people involved, the police, the fire, the public force, you know, the village, um, the schools. And, and we'll just keep, you know, amending this and changing it as with the times and when we find out new information about what's working, what's not. So again, you never want to be there, but I'm glad that our community is taking a very proactive approach in this. There's, you know, it's, it's great when we've got so many supportive parents and officials that have kids here that want to make this the best place they can make it. So that was a good, a good meeting. Um, we've been talking about P S A T, S A T. Um, April ninth is coming, so we'll be back from spring break. And about two weeks later, we're gonna have a, have a big old testing day here. Um, the seniors will be going on that field trip to the McKinney Red Plex. The trip is being organized by Mrs. Brooke Place. She is still looking for some senior parents to help out with the senior lunch that day. They should contact her. I'll send emails out and over teach reads to parents again and just keep them updated on what's going on. Um, we got a really nice email the other day that I wanted to read to you. Our girls soccer team played against Salem on Tuesday night. Uh, they won, it was eight or nine to zero. And, um, but it's, I learned, by the time you get seven to zero, then you just cut the rest of the time in half. Um, this came from the coach at Salem. He actually sent it to Mr. Law and he, excuse me. He said, "My name is Chris Sexton. I am the Salem Girls Soccer Head Coach. I'm emailing you to let you know how much we enjoyed playing at your facility. Your girls soccer team was very humble, respectful, and probably the most sportsmanlike team that I've seen as a high school coach or referee." Um, yes, they were also very skilled at soccer. "You have a great girls soccer team and coaching staff. I aspire for my team to be like yours in every way." So I thought that was really nice. It's always good to get those good emails and, um, you know, again, we have a great conference. So it's great when we have good relationships with other schools. At last, this is a really piece of good news, so, um, America Farmers Girl Communities. Um, we had received a twenty-five-hundred grant last year through Diane Shaper. She had applied for it. She's been trying to get this grant for years. We got it last year. I was notified, um, by Wendy Frazel from America's Farmers Girl Communities again this week, letting us know that we are gonna be the recipient of another twenty-five-hundred grant for our FFA. This time, the applicant that did all the, the grant work and the application was Karen Neff, and she designated our FFA for that twenty-five-hundred-dollar scholarship. So two years in a row. That's pretty awesome and amazing, and I would like to thank, um, Karen Neff for her contribution and looking after our community. That's all I got. Thanks.
Any questions from Mr. Young?
Just to, did, uh, the legislation here in Illinois just raised that, uh, the smoking and the vape age to, or was it just smoking to twenty-one? Or is that in the process?
I don't think that's passed.
Okay, that's what they were talking about. And then, uh, uh, the P S A T test for the Southmoors. I don't think enough people, uh, know the importance of, of that as far as the National Merit Scholarship, uh, and that, that is attached to that is, is...
Not this one.
No.
So, um, this one is, is new required for tenth grade, but they'll take a, those interested would take that again in the fall as a junior. And that one is the one that would account for the National Merit Scholarship.
All right.
So, but these tests are incredibly important. Um, again, it helps prepare, helps prepare the kids for the S A T coming down the road. And with their results, they can still tie that to Khan Academy for those free programs that are, you know, they use the kid's scores to, you know, designate and build a program just for that kid. So when you're looking at the building of the math and, and the English skills, you know, you can't beat that for a free cost. So...
And, and, but to piggyback on that, how is the, the math, uh, program that, or when is that going to? It's going now?
It's going great, yes. I think they actually have...
Yes, and this is for an update.
They only have, I think, maybe two weeks left. I think they finish the week before the P S A T. It's full. The kids are there every morning and, um, Mrs. Neff's going through, um, what to expect on the test. And then she throws in the more difficult problems and teaches them how to work through it, so...
It's nice to get just a little update on that.
I'm, I'm thrilled. We had so many kids take advantage of it.
Any other questions? I've got one. On this, uh, YouTube video on the community crisis, do you know, does how many people view that at all or?
Uh...
We can find that.
We can find out.
Curious, um, I didn't think the meeting was all that well attended myself, but I'm just kinda curious.
In three schools. I, I was hoping for a couple hundred, but, um...
Smith had had a community meeting over that night.
I would have liked to see more there. I think the information was really good and it's a really strong, yes. I, I think that would be another meeting that we would want to maybe hold again in the fall, especially as more kids come through and just keep promoting it, getting people there.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Right, May Southwest Division, ready to meet?
All right, next week is the last meeting for the year. Uh, Kendra's, uh, registered, myself and three board members I just have in there. It's at Grant Middle School. We'll leave here about four forty-five. If you have any issues with that, let me know. I already talked to one board member about it. But that's usually a pretty good evening.
Item B, what's the way you look at it?
Um, I know Mr. Haas asked a question about that. I listed about four different bills that, um, will probably have an effect on us, uh, some way. Um, there, there's also two different documents in your folders that has a list of all the bills, kind of a summary. Um, it's got one that's sent to administration and one that you probably should have already received. Um, but there is, like I mentioned, at some point in time, um, uh, with the new governor taking over and trying to, um, put together and, and push through some of his, uh, campaign promises, there's been a lot of activity. Um, so the next couple of months, maybe before then, will be fairly interesting.
Okay, I would say summer work update.
Just wanted to point out a few things, um, that's going on. Um, lots of, uh, work again this summer. Um, almost all of it's, uh, building issues. Um, all of it is, you know, kind of went through, it's all covered financially. Um, Bus Garage, there's more information. I'll talk about that, uh, later in the board meetings. But that, uh, bid opening is next Tuesday, so anx- anx- anxiously waiting for that. Uh, but then there's some other things that we've gotten numbers on and, um, they're gonna make a decision. We replaced some carpet last year. We're gonna try to finish up the carpet, uh, work in the south end. Um, I don't know if you noticed, they went through this week and pulled out half the lights. I think they pulled out a hundred and twenty-eight light bulbs out of this room. Um, because these are full bulk four bulb light fixtures and there's only two, and these are the LED lights. So kind of playing around, but they're gonna do cafeteria. Um, so it's just, that's part of that whole LED conversion that we started a year or so ago.
I have a question on that. Do they have the new balance? Do you consider they have to do?
They don't have the new balance.
Okay, alumni directory, item D.
Uh, this is something that, uh, Jeff Alt and I, um, worked together on. Uh, I think we have about fifty or sixty people that have signed up. Uh, what we're gonna try to do is, uh, put together some maybe quarterly newsletters and, and send it out on that directory. Um, and, and use it for that to get information out, but then also, um, classes can, uh, we can share that information with classes. We're gonna try to organize reunions, things like that. Just wanted to let you know that that was moving forward fairly successfully.
Okay, item E, school calendar update.
Uh, like I said, fingers crossed that we don't have any more weather delays, but we had four days. And I think that puts our students' last day of Wednesday, May twenty-ninth. And then the last day for teachers would be the institute day on Thursday, May thirtieth. So, um, just wanna kind of give you an update. One of the laws that they're talking about, uh, with the new calendar, there is an option of doing, um, virtual classroom days. But that's something we're gonna have to work out, do a lot of work to kind of plan that. We can't just randomly call it a virtual day. But that is part of the new law, that they're going to try to bring that all together, so...
You can do on snow days and that?
Yes. And especially since we're one-to-one, makes it a lot easier. We can have teachers set up assignments and they can just push assignments out. There's ways to check if the students are on, how long they've been on. They'll have to be on a certain amount of time. So there's a lot of work that has to go into before you can actually, uh, put it in place.
Any questions on the superintendent update? If not, we'll move on to whole business. Item A, vision statement survey update.
Okay, uh, put that out, um, it's been out probably for, I don't know, three weeks now. Um, I'll send another, uh, post on Facebook. We've only had about forty-seven or forty-eight responses. Um, one of, one of the choices is kind of overwhelmingly leading the way. But, uh, if you remember, we're gonna have that meeting before the regular board meeting in April, where we talk about the vision statement and then move forward with the rest of the strategic plan.
Okay, item B, second reading of the proposed changes of the FCHS Parent Student Handbook for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year.
All right, uh, Ms. Crunk was, uh, not here tonight, so Ms. Jung is gonna hit some of the changes since the last meeting. We're not gonna go through every single item, so just the items that have changed, and I, I know she talked about it.
We talked today and weren't gonna be any additional ones to discuss tonight.
So like I said, Ms. Jung, we don't have any changes that are gonna happen. We actually do talk during the day.
We do.
Yeah, it's just, uh, so there isn't any changes from the others. I know what it was. The, what she talked about with the new vaping law, we talked, debated whether we're gonna put that in the handbook or not put it in the handbook. And we decided that we're gonna wait and, and, and have conversations and get that all put in place and then use it as more of an administrative procedure. And we'll send that out at the beginning of the year, but this is the new, uh, procedure that we'll be using. Um, possibility of maybe including it next year because of the timing, we didn't do it. I apologize.
That's okay. And then the other topic, I don't know if you were gonna discuss that too about, um, the colleges now can recommend the ask for a student's disciplinary record.
So colleges are starting to ask for a student's disciplinary record. And, um, talking with our lawyer, the lawyer said that that is, um, legal, but that we are better off probably, um, notifying, basically setting up a procedure, we're gonna notify the parents if that is asked and ask for the parents' permission. Uh, but we, we, if we put it in place, we could actually do that, and then the parents could fight it. And then you get into a big old squabble. So we decided we're just gonna do it this way and just, again, do, set up like an administrative procedure where if they call the counselor and say, you know, we want this information, then we're gonna contact the parents, say this is, they want this information, are you okay with that? And if they say no, then we'll tell the college and the parents, you know, I mean, it's, it's kind of between them and the college. We're kind of stuck in the middle. We don't want to get into a battle between us and the parents for us and the college.
At the same time, uh, how many times have you, you heard of a, a teacher getting passed along or any, anybody moving from, having a problem in one district, moving to a different district and, and nothing was done or nothing was said? That a person got maybe not a glowing recommendation, but they, so is that what they're looking for?
No, this is, this is for kids that are, uh, applying to college.
Yes.
The college is asking if they have any disciplinary record. They want us to share the disciplinary record.
I get that.
So I don't, I'm not following what you're asking.
Well, my, uh, my analogy was of, uh, a teacher or anybody even in life that, uh, has an incident, is released from a school or a business and, and then goes to a different district, uh, that is unaware of, of a previous problem. Maybe most of the, the dis- incidents on a student aren't to the level of, of that. Most of them don't, don't really matter. But, uh, just saying that we're gonna go to the parents and then if the parent says no, don't tell them. Uh, we're gonna say, okay, well, we can't release it because of parents. I can see both ways.
But for our point, I, I don't want to get in the middle of a squabble between a parent and a college. I mean, this, this is a student that's applying for a college. We're kind of out of the picture now. We just happen to hold records. So if, if they don't want their information released and it jeopardizes them getting into college, that's a decision they've made. I don't want to get into the, the habit of us just automatically giving that information out to any college that wants to ask for it. And then the parent could then come after us and say, you know, we, we now want a hearing on the incident that you reported that may have happened whenever. It ju- it just brings up a lot of, and this is, we talked with the lawyer. The lawyer recommended that we probably need to go that, the route that we're talking about.
The students could still be minor also, how much causes.
And that...
That causes a lot of...
And it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Right. So if you, if they're a minor, you have to ask the parents. If they're not a minor, you have to ask the student.
Right.
If they're eighteen. Yeah. It's, it's still, it's still the same.
So basically, honestly, I talked with Jill about this today and responded to Lori's, uh, email. If the college contacts the high school and it asks if they've had any disciplinary issues, and the answer is yes, then the contact is made with the parents to inform them of that?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna contact the parent first and say the college wants to know. They're calling us and asking for us to send records. Are you okay with us sending records? And if the parents say no, then we're not gonna send the records.
And that, that'll be your response then?
Well, whatever, I don't know. The wording, but...
So the college would, would not know then if there was any disciplinary thing. They would, they would, but they're gonna know that the parent directed, directed not to be sent. So in a way, that's still a little red flag to the college admissions office without really revealing the issue. And that we work on and quote, say any specifics about liability. We were told not to release it.
Right, right. But it is a law that you're allowed to release those, but you have to have some kind of written procedure for it.
And Mrs. Meyer has been receiving more requests each year for those records.
Yeah, that's what I do all kind of, that, that's, uh, popping up with, things are going on in the, uh, today. But that's probably the kindest, maybe safest response, even though the attorney said it was okay to respond. That's just one extra step in, you know, not maybe fully disclosing everything, but... If you want to check on it, you can call them.
The law says it's legal. Attorney recommends that we use this procedure, ask permission first. Yeah. I just don't like, I'd like to, you said, because I don't like the college hanging out there and responding to them and saying, yeah, we were told not to give them anything.
I need to ask this question. If the college, um... Well, the college would then have to deal with the parent or the family, and the school is out at that point in time. If they direct, if they've, if you've asked them and they say, we prefer you don't, then we're done. And then that's between the, the family and the college.
I mean, I, I would guess so, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
But the response we get back to the college and we don't get a bad name is the school saying, hey, we don't, you know, we're getting a response out of free or, you know, cause any, this way we're kind of covered in.
And there's still a response, like I was thinking of that, uh, achieving scheme, that, that, uh, thing came along about then. There were some, that would have been a sticky weight, uh, if those questions had been asked at that point in time.
Is it, is that something that, uh, might be able to be incorporated into the registration? That, just another sheet of paper that, uh, do we have your permission to release, uh, to a request from a college for entrance, uh, information about your...
We could do it like that. We could do it like that.
It's done at the beginning of the year before anything happens. It's in the file already. You don't have to then contact anybody. It's all, it's all in there. Just along.
I don't think that'll stop the counselors from having to make a phone call if they don't have the sheet of paper. Because I think... don't have the sheet of paper, because I think they, they're gonna feel obligated that if they get, uh, a college calling, you know, because if they're asking for information, hopefully they're interested in the student, to possibly put that student's ability to get into college in jeopardy, just because they didn't sign a piece of paper, so I, I think we could do it that way, but I, I think it'll, we'll still get some that they'll have to make phone calls and say they asked for it, there was no piece of paper, you didn't sign anything, so, I would think we would set it up, you'd, you'd have to sign one or the other, hopefully.
Yeah, but at the registration process, it just so, it seems like a great time to do it.
Yep.
And at that time, they can say yes or no then, before they're...
Right.
Which one does that sound like, counsel player?
And the question is, if not, I need a motion to approve the second reading of the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty student handbook, parent student handbook, approved by Mr. McGrell, seconded by Mrs. Scott, who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed, say no, motion passed, okay, item C, curriculum audit update.
Um, so this was something we've been talking about that came out of the consolidation study, uh, Dr. Wamser and I, uh, last month, met with, uh, Dr. Jody Wood from St. Louis University, um, a lot of credit has to be given to, uh, Dr. Wamser on this, this was one of his professors, um, and so he had some conversations with her before, um, she teaches, uh, curriculum, um, at St. Louis U in a doctoral program, so it's for current, usually current principals and superintendents that are trying to get their doctor, um, and she has done this in the past, uh, has gone to different schools, she'll use the students in the class, um, she'll set up teams, they'll go to different schools, they'll review the curriculum, uh, we have to do a certain amount of work ahead of time, Ms. Jung and Mr. Alt have already been working with the teachers to work on our curriculum and, um, to write our curriculum out, and so that information will be useful, and we'll be able to use that, um, then they'll align it, uh, both horizontally and vertically, then they'll come back with the report next fall, um, and then we'll be able to take that report and hopefully make some changes to better our curriculum, they're gonna look at all four schools, um, I, I think all four schools are on board to have this done, which is nice, uh, and it, the cost is wonderful, it's not gonna cost us to die, we may have to take her out to lunch or something like that, um, Ms. Jung and I and all the other administrators from the four schools are gonna go in June sometime, I think it is, and sit down with Dr. Wood and start some of that preliminary, uh, training, and then she's gonna come in the first or second day, I don't remember which, the first day maybe of when the teachers are here, and she'll sit down with the teachers, and then we're gonna dedicate the first two, um, early release days to this process, so it, I, I think this is gonna work out really well, um, I think we'll get some of the information, um, that we've been looking for as far as the curriculum, and, uh, go from there.
Any questions? Well, move on to item D, athletic trainer at underclass home events.
Uh, spoke with, um, James Sepich, he's the sports medicine supervisor from ATI, so he's Brett's boss, um, talked to him about, uh, the idea of what it would cost us to have an athletic trainer at the underclass event, so he went through, looked at the schedule, eliminated any kind of duplication, so if, if we have soccer and baseball, you know, you wouldn't need two trainers for that, they could, you go back and forth, um, he estimates it, it's gonna run us about forty-five hundred dollars, um, to cover all of our underclass games in a year, uh, right now we spend about twelve thousand dollars, so that's, that's a fairly substantial, uh, increase in our, um, cost for the, uh, sports trainer, but we have talked to Brett, Brett's, uh, in favor, Brett thinks it's a good idea, if we would set up a training with all coaches ahead of time, we would sit down and go through basic first aid, you know, how do you treat this, what are the steps you do if this happens, especially for the underclass games, um, I, I think that's our best bet, um, and to see, you know, I think our coaches do a really good job, we're very conscientious, but just with this little extra training, it's just gonna make them that much better, so I don't know what questions you have, um, discussion, but, uh, I, I would like for Brett to put on a, a training for our coaches at the beginning of the year and, and kind of handle it that way, for the underclass game.
Questions?
I think it'd be acceptable, uh, for the training, I think, instead of, but not, not only first aid from an injury, but also recognition of heat, stroke, I mean, in lieu of some of these high school kids.
Right.
I mean, every kind of, uh, situation, uh, that would be, should be included.
And that's just my wording, saying first aid, not knowing a better word, so.
No, no.
But no, I, I...
I didn't mean it by fault.
Right, no, I think, I think he's gonna basically say, neither of the things that I kind of do to assess situations, and this is what you need to do in this situation, that situation, so we'll plan on, uh, organizing that, if that's okay with everybody.
I kind of, I kind of struggle with this one, um, because the injuries are not any different between underclass or upperclass, I mean, it's almost another way of having a class type system, and I, I don't like that, I really don't like that, um, I feel like that, uh, underclass sports are just as important, and they can have the same injuries, we believe that it's important to have in front of the upperclass, I don't know why we would think they would, I, I would like to do both, I would like to do the, the underclass games, but then also work with the staff, because they're trying to go back and forth between events, there may be some times where they have to give minor stuff and tell the trainer to get over there, but that's, that's my take on it, I, I, I don't want a class system, and this one, that's what this feels like.
All right, away games, when the other schools don't have a, have a trainer, having our coaches being able to, right.
I would like to do both.
Does the coaching staff, um, have you talked with them about, about this in terms of receiving a training from Brett, and, uh, they're comfortable with that, some of them probably already have some good knowledge about how to attend to, to those kinds of things, but, um, um, with their athletic backgrounds, with their, maybe even some of their first aid backgrounds, um, I'm not gonna argue about it, but, uh, you know, how do, how do we, how do we assess, you know, whether their capabilities are too close to what the trainers would be, if, if they, because they're, I mean, they're not, they've already got knowledge, but they're gonna have that enhanced with, with that extra training.
I, I think the most important thing is that they are trained how to handle, um, situations and who to call, um, you know, talking with Brett, if, if a student, let's say, you know, a student falls in the gym and, and gets a concussion, which we had this year, well, you know, Brett, Brett can assess in the game if the kid has a concussion or not, coach is not gonna be able to do that, but if, if the kid falls and hits his head, I mean, the coach, they're gonna stop the game, they're gonna get eyes, they're gonna tell the parent, you probably need to take him to the hospital, or if it's bad enough, we'll call an ambulance, so the steps that the coach would take are the things that Brett's gonna kind of train them on, on, these are the steps you take for this particular scenario, um, so, I mean, I don't, I don't see it as a class thing, I mean, I, my son's played underclass, and it, it doesn't bother me that, that there's not a trainer there, I mean, if something happens, he's hurt, you know, I'm gonna take him, or the coach says, hey, you need to do this, if I don't, you know, if I'm not sure, then that's what I'll listen to, but, um, Brett, I mean, the reason that we have the athletic trainers much anymore is more for the, the head injuries, the concussions, and if there's any question, then you just take him to the hospital, urgent care, wherever it is, and that's probably what Brett would have done anyway, for a lot of kids, if he thought it was bad. So, I mean, there's no guarantee, it's like buying insurance, I mean, it's just, there's no guarantee that nothing's gonna happen, but, uh, I, I, I think the coaches can give as much information as they can and, and direct that student to where they're in, still in good shape and going to the right people to get attention if they need attention.
And why are we paying it twelve thousand?
Well, because we started it several years ago, and...
I mean, that's the first side of it, I mean, if either one of them, we don't think, we need any of the right coaches, and we don't need any more right coaches.
Well, he's, he's at all of the soccer games, he's at all of the football games, and those are the, the two big ones for the head injuries, and so that's where he's able to make an assessment on head injuries, can that player go back in, especially in football, you know, they have the system where, you know, if it hits, it registers, and then he ma- he can make the assessment right then and there, the coaches are gonna make that assessment, so that's why he's at those games, and then he's at the other varsity games, and that's just how it's been set up, um, so, I mean, I, I don't really, my answer's very...
For freshman, sophomore, football games, right?
He's there.
He is?
Yeah.
Or you said underclass, you got that?
No, for baseball, um...
Soccer.
No, he's there, he, he's...
For underclass?
Well, 'cause they always play at the same time.
Hmm.
Yeah, he, I mean, he, he's either there for the whole game or most of the game, but 'cause soccer always played afterwards, and he always stayed, I mean, every time I was there, he stayed, so, but that's, that's why, I mean, there are schools that don't, I mean, we went to London, London doesn't have an athletic trainer, but I, I think, I think we would have a lot more fallout if we decided not to have an athletic trainer at those events, since we've already kind of gotten used to having them and, and rely on, the coaches do rely on, um, to make those decisions on, can he get back in, or can she, can, can't get back in.
Well, and he comes early, and he tapes and, and things, and there's probably some training for the managers, uh, on that level of taping.
The, the coaches and, and Brett tape.
Oh.
The managers don't, I don't think the managers tape, yeah, but Brett, like, Coach Laurel taped kid before practice, I mean, I taped before practice or before games, before we had an athletic trainer, it's, it's become a very nice, um, insurance policy type of thing that he's there, but I don't know that it's necessarily worth spending that much money to have him there and everything, that's my thought.
Uh, you mentioned, instead, I think our money would be, uh, more well spent by having him conduct first aid, uh, so what, what would be the, the cost of those first aid, do you have a guess on it?
No, I mean, we're probably gonna have to, I mean, there'll probably be some stipends for the coaches to be there, I don't know what we do if we feed him, or how we do that, but, I mean, he, he gets paid twenty-nine dollars an hour, that's what he gets charged for maybe...
It's regular.
So I, I would assume it'd be five, six hours would be the training, so a couple hundred dollars for him, and probably feed everybody, or what we're gonna do.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I guess you need a motion to be there...
We don't really need a motion, we're gonna change it.
I made a motion that we have him for underclass as well.
Maybe second on that there.
I didn't hear that motion.
I make a motion that we have the trainer for the underclass sports as well.
Can I, can I ask a question, based on this, where does the extra forty-five hundred come from then?
It would, it would be from, just there, the other, comes from.
Any seconds?
Uh, I'll second his.
Okay, we have a motion.
Mr. Reynolds.
So Mr. Reynolds, seconded by Mr. Oz, uh, let's see, is it, is it anything, we did, we did a little, okay, maybe we'll start that with, uh, Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
I definitely don't have a name.
Aye.
No.
No.
Victor?
No.
Andy, sorry.
No.
Okay, looks like, uh, the motion failed, so we go on to item E, tax computation report reviewed.
Uh, this is something that, uh, has been brought up in the past, to be able to take a look at this, we did get, um, our, um, tax, uh, computation report from the county clerk, our EAV went up, um, about eighty-five, or eight-point-five million, which is about a three-point-one-seven percent increase, which is, um, a little bit more than we were, we thought it was going to, so that's good, um, it's well under what we had levied, um, so that's good as well, we didn't lose any money, um, I did sit down with Diane, we looked at all the levies, we feel that the levies are, are correct, so if we were going to lower it, this would be a time to lower, um, any of the levies, but I'm recommending that we keep the levies where they're at, and I just need to sign that and we'll send it back, any questions or comments over there?
No, I, the only comment I would have is I appreciate the effort you put in, and I looked at all the numbers, it's actually lower than what we thought it was going to be, so.
Well...
Two-point-three-eight versus two-point-three-nine, is what the certified rate is, because I pulled up what we had for the last meeting, last meeting.
Yeah, I pulled, I pulled, they're in your packet, I think, I pulled, uh, seventeen and eighteen tax computation.
First and final packet, or?
Uh, it's in X, it's in the, it's in the electronic.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this subject?
No, I think, finally, like I said, so you had two-point-three-nine-one-one an hour, two-point-three-eight-five-nine, so certified, probably good.
Okay, we'll go on to item F.
I just wanted to talk a little bit about the, uh, bus garage and ag classroom update, um, I did do another presentation, I was invited, um, by Pete Vogel to do the ag night for Rotary, so I did a presentation there and it, it, it went over, um, well, uh, we do have a special board meeting next, um, Tuesday night, March twenty-sixth at seven PM, um, and that is to look at, uh, the bids, um, I sent that agenda out today, I think Kendra sent it out to all the, the public today, we did have to, we are actually up to four containers, twenty-foot containers out there, um, just more stuff out there than we thought, so, assuming that this moves forward, um, we're gonna have to find a home for a lot of that stuff, or have the world's biggest garage sale, and maybe that'll just pay for half of it, so, um, they did do an inspection, um, last week of the, um, the sewer lines and found that they're just unusable shape, so part of the bid, um, working with Mike, 'cause they're gonna have to dig new, um, sewer lines in, but we're gonna put bathrooms in, I didn't, I didn't wanna put a bathroom in, try to push that stuff through a little sewer line, so they're gonna run it all the way out of the building, um, punch a hole through the foundation walls, the term they're using, and then connect outside, so most of the digging will be outside, which should be a lot easier, I also didn't wanna, uh, get hooked up and then after the fact, try to get something in and cut that floor up and start messing with it, so, I think in the long run, it's the best way to go.
Steel pipe can work with PVC, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, then in the future, if you need a blast, it'd be a blast.
Yeah, it's, it's, it used to be steel pipe.
Yeah, that's why I don't argue with you about the blast, you know, it's kind of a red steel now. It kind of, it kind of not worked out well.
The, uh, they were able to find, follow the line on what's gonna be the classroom side all the way to the wall, and it stopped, they couldn't get further, the shop side is so full of stuff that they got four-foot, and that was the cleanup, they couldn't even get into the drain, the other thing they're gonna do is, uh, you guys walked in there, they're gonna take those big troughs out, even on the shop side, and just put a smaller drain, and it doesn't make sense to have that huge trough, it's just spot to collect, so that's part of it, I think there's been four changes, um, that Mike has, has worked out with FGM, one of them, we moved the windows up higher, we turned the windows, um, in the front, and that's just to, mostly for safety, that, that you don't have a clear side into the building, just from the windows, um, but then it also opens up wall space, um, and there was a couple others, I think they're all, I don't even remember what they were, but, so hopefully next Tuesday at ten o'clock, we'll get good, good news.
Any questions or comments? If not, we'll move on to new business, item A, set date for special board meeting in April, we'll seat new board.
So part of the process of, after the election, is you have to seat the new board, there is a timeline to do that, our planned board meeting falls out of that timeline, so had the option of either moving the regular meeting to within that timeline, or having a special board meeting, um, this is something I talked to, uh, Doug, Mr. Parrish about, and we decided to go ahead and, and have a special meeting, this is, um... This is, um, basically how we've done this in the past. Um, so we'll go through with the regular board meeting, um, which I believe is the twenty-first.
April eighteenth.
I got you, April eighteenth. I think it had to be done by the twenty-first, if it was the twenty-first, you could've done, so anyway. So the, there's only four days unless we wanna go a weekend or a Friday. So Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, Thursday, the twenty-fifth, Monday, the twenty-ninth, or Thursday, the thirtieth. It has to be done by the thirtieth, uh, so the board has to be seated by that, that time. So I don't know what, I would love to have everybody there, cause I, I think it's a good practice for us to all retake the oath of office. I think it, I think we did it last time, I think it's a good habit, but we definitely need the new board members.
I have a, a trip the week of the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth, the, every weekday, and I have to travel beforehand, uh, to get there on that Monday, uh, so the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth are the one dates I can make.
So, right now, I'm pretty good troll for.
I'm good for you, too.
I ha, I prefer the Monday.
I was gonna say, I would think Monday, case or something, but honestly, we can't, we couldn't move it to Tuesday, cause you have to give forty-eight hours notice, cause it isn't board meeting, so. So we'll set it for Monday, the twenty-ninth?
Sounds good.
Okay.
In, uh, seven o'clock?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, item B, consider Press Plus option for the board policy manual.
So we have, um, subscribed to Press for a long time, and what that does is it gives us an online, um, access to all the policies. Uh, we get an update, uh, but they have a service that's been in existence for a few years now, uh, called Press Plus. This is where they will take your board policy, they'll review it, um, for board policy manual, they'll review it. And then when we get the changes, it's all done electronically. Um, it used to be fairly cumbersome for Jane and I, now Kendra and I. We'd actually had some policies we'd gone through to, to, to start bringing the board to the board to go through this. Um, spoke with several superintendents, um, they all use Press Plus. I, I sent Mary an email and just said, is this something that you would recommend us do? And her response was simply yes. Um, if there is an initial cost of fifty-five hundred dollars, uh, there will also be a commitment, and we can decide, uh, I can talk with Doug about this, of, of who would be on the committee, that they would sit down, or if we want the whole board, the ISBE would, uh, our I A S B, the School Board Association, would come in and, and sit down and we would review our policy. They would get the, the thoughts of the board on what direction they wanna go and how they wanna set this up. And then they will also come in and train Kendra and I to get into the, the system, so that in the future, we go through this. Our, our board policy, uh, manual is, is, uh, is outdated, it hasn't been updated and it needs this. And, um, so, um, this, we don't need a motion, um, because it's, it's well under the limit. But my plans were to, uh, contact, uh, the representative from the I A S B, um, either tomorrow or Monday, uh, if, unless the board objected.
Does the I A S B have a fee?
That's the fee.
Oh, that is their fee.
So that, this is the setup, and then there's a yearly fee.
I, I got confused.
Yeah, this is their program, Press Plus.
Okay.
So there's a, it's a fifty-five hundred dollar, um, for us to go through and get everything set up. They'll go through our entire policy manual, they'll tell us what needs to be updated, and then it's a, I think I, I put it in, I think it's a nineteen hundred dollar yearly fee. Something, something like that, is the yearly fee.
Any questions or comments?
I think it's a good idea. Those policies are pretty cumbersome.
Looks like I see a lot of headcount.
And they have to be very, very correct.
Yeah. And, and there's several policies that give you options. And so they can help you work through the options, and then once you pick the option, they will, you, they, you send it back to them, they do all the work. And then you don't have to do that work, I also don't have to send it to my lawyer to, to make sure the lawyer says it's okay, because this is the policy that the I A S B, unless it's something specific, and we've changed a few things and changed some dates, we can change that again on our policies.
Let me make it to retirement, general blue binder.
And we won't have any blue binders, everything will be electronic.
Will we then be able to place that on our website?
Yes. Yes. If you look, Smithon uses it, and Smithon has it on theirs, and so you can look at how they have it.
Okay, sounds like it's an approved. Okay, item C, approved transportation agreement.
Uh, this is the yearly, um, agreement that we sit down with, um, have sat down with District Seventy and District One Thirty, um, for the transportation cost. And then it's broken down, we pay a certain amount of the cost, um, and it's based on the number of students, the number of trips, the number of buses. Uh, St. La Boree is now going to be using that system, um, they're going to use one of the buses, um, uh, they'll have their bus driver, or somebody, I'm not sure who's driving it, but they'll, they'll have a bus driver to drive their students, but it'll all be managed through Fritz and, and, uh, our transportation. Um, our cost is actually gonna, our percentage is actually gonna drop, um, by three and a half percent, so that was a nice, um, a nice little outcome of that. And we just need to approve this transportation agreement and keep moving forward, it's working out very well.
Questions or comments?
Only question I have is around, is that twenty?
No.
All right, I'm sorry, it says nineteen twenty only, like, seventy-seven, what, what's typed out?
Didn't the board back it? Oh, 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 and we could have that, but that's, we also have vans, we have cars, so, and they, and they handle all of that. So they, they manage all the cars, their activity bus, um, I thi, I think we have thirty.
We have more than we're not giving them, like you talked about.
We're, we're gonna, yes.
We're paying a monthly fee, I don't know, and all of this stuff, you haven't said nothing.
We, we.
Eighteen dollars a month, just.
I know, we have to get rid of, I just, yes, I, I, we haven't gotten it done, yeah.
I wonder a lot about this, I'm just, I gave a lot of detail.
All the agreement, yeah.
Yeah. I didn't really, I didn't really say that.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I need a motion to approve the, uh, transportation agreement. Someone, ooh, by Mr. Reynolds.
Hi.
Seconded by Mrs. Scott, uh, that just takes a year and a, no.
No, please, the money.
No, we need money, okay, we'll start with Mr. Madrell.
Aye.
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 Motion approved. Item D, approved membership in IHSA for nineteen, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty school year.
So this is annual business, uh, for us to be a member of the IHSA, um, and I recommend that we approve this.
Let's see, that, that's a fee also.
Yes, it is.
Okay, we'll need a motion for, ooh, by Mr. Madrell. Uh, seconded by Mr. Oz, and we'll start with Mr. Oz on this.
Aye.
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 Motion approved. Okay, looks like we're down to board correspondents.
Uh, none.
Addendum.
None.
Do we have a reason on the closed session?
We do, um, consider, uh, personnel issues and also, um, possible real estate, um, discussion.
We need a motion to go in closed session.
Some of.
Ooh, by Mr. Oz, seconded by Mrs. Scott, I'll start, uh, voting by aye.
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 Motion passes, or any closed sessions? Okay, ready? Yes, we're back in open session. Let's see, I guess we need to take action on items here.
Yeah, uh, moved to accept the letter of re, uh, resignation of Megan Mitchell as music teacher at F C H S.
So move, ooh, by Mr. Reynolds. Seconded, seconded by Master Madrell, I guess we'll start with Mrs. Scott on this.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes.
Aye.
Oh, forgot, Angie, okay, motion passes.
Uh, moved to accept the resignation of Miss Carrie Law as cheer coach. Who moved?
Seconded by Mr. Madrell, seconded by Mr. Oz, okay, Mr. Reynolds, sort of.
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
Uh, moved to accept the resignation of, uh, Miss Katie Melton as a teacher at the end of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year.
So moved?
Moved by Mr. Oz, I'll second that, start with Mr. Madrell.
Aye.
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 Angie.
Aye.
Motion passes. And it looks like that's all.
I believe that's it.
So I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded by Mrs. Scott, seconded by Mr. Reynolds, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Uh, looks like meeting adjourned, thank you, everybody.